Let's call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. We could say it twice on one day.
It's always a good thing.
Really good day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. You know, Steve, I always noticed that you typically get ahead of us a little bit. So can you slow down your pledging, please? Just a little bit.
Slow down your pledging.
Well, maybe you're going too far.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
You're being too reverent about it.
We were all together.
It needs to be spirited.
We want some reverence. We want reverence. So slow it down. Thank you. If that's the worst thing you do, then you're in pretty good shape. We're gonna, we're gonna start with Mike Sharp.
He's been patiently waiting.
Good morning, Mike. How are you? Thank you for your guys' work. And Steve, please thank the building grounds crew. I didn't see a speck of ice. I don't know if that was because of their hard work or it was a little bit warmer in town than it was out in the county. But there was a lot of ice in the county.
Probably not where you went, towards it was. It's all looking good now.
Yes, it is. Good. So Mike has raised a question about when he hires somebody as a truck driver and they need to come in and do, go to school to be, get their CDL. We've always set it up so that if they left in the first two years, they would pay us back part of the, the cost of the schooling. But remember that the cost is far greater than just the cost of the schooling. In the first place, we, we pay them while they're going to school for, is it six weeks?
Yes, six week course.
So, you know, there's, there's four or $5,000 of salary infringes just in the six weeks that we're paying them to go to school. Whereas if they came in with a CDL, we wouldn't have that, that issue. They could go right to work. So you want to share with us what you're, what you're proposing as a change to that process?
I was talking to Henry County, and that's kind of what brought the subject up, where they're going maxed family placement. They were sending their drivers and looked a lot cheaper. So I kind of investigated that and talked to the supervisor over in Henry County. It's a lot cheaper where they're going, for the most part, because they're going for Class B, where we're sending our guys for Class A. Class B is like a two-week course, and ours is a six-week course with the Class A. So, but then he was telling me on the price, he said, well, he said, that price is a little cheaper than what was in the paper. Based on, he said, we raised our price more than just the schooling to try to recoup some of our money. So that kind of put a thing in my head. So kind of started talking to Jeff about it. So the school is $5,245 is what the cost of the school is for a Class A. That includes your, to get your physical, your drug test, and all those type of things, and actually taking the test. $5,240. So during that time that they're in the school, when we hired them in, they start out $1 less than what we would hire a Class A CDL driver at. So that would be $22.37. So in rough figure, and if you figure 240 hours at $22.37, you're at $5,368.80.
Sorry, 5,000 what?
So then if you add the school plus the pay for the six weeks, you're at $10,613.80. So the way it's set up, they have to sign a contract that Ron had written up. I'll put this for you guys if you'd like to see him, kind of what the contract is. In the contract, it doesn't have a dollar amount. So I guess the question to Ron is, should, should there be a dollar amount for each person? I mean, it would be kind of a blank item. Blank line. We have a kind of a blank line that we add the person's name to it. And then there's a place for the president of the commissioners to sign. There's not a place for the reimbursement expense. So I guess what I was thinking then on, on the reimbursement is, is to go for like $9,600 at this point in time, or for this one. We got one starting on Monday is what we got. $9,600, yes, that's about $1,000 cheaper than what we have invested totally. But then it's over a 24-month, two-year period that we got. If they would happen to leave early, then it's based on a month. So that come down to $400 a month makes easy math, easy figuring, not trying to.
What's our existing one that we have? You said over payment over how long? Because we have this in place already, don't we?
Yes, it's, it's in place now.
So is this changing the term?
Well, we've used.
The dollar amount?
It's just paying for the school.
Right, we've just been paying for the school. I mean, losing the salary.
This would just increase the dollar amount that they would have to repay.
The same timeframe, 24 months?
Same timeframe, everything like that would be the same. It's just raising that price up, try to entice them to stay a full two years. So we, since this program started, we've done, we've sent four to school and hired four. We still retain one out of the four. So the odds are kind of, at this point against us a little bit. But at the same time, I've gotten payment back from all of them. They've all paid back what they owe.
So the question arises to me is, how do we, this is part of that, of retention, but how do we also retain the other three? What's our retention? Why are they leaving?
More money.
Money? Is that significant?
I, I, they don't tell me what they're getting when they leave.
So, I mean, we're basically becoming a training ground?
Yes.
Some of the monies that he's recouped have come from their subsequent.
Their employers paid it, and I knew there was.
I, I know one employer paid it because we got a check directly from them. The other two, where they come from, pretty good chance they either get a bonus. I did look into like DOT Foods. One of them went to DOT Foods. DOT Foods is not playing, paying any incentives at this point in time because they probably are full. When they're trying to get employees in, they put out an incentive and you get a $5,000 or $10,000 sign-on bonus to go to school or drive for them. We don't have a bonus situation where we can pay a bonus on that, but.
Did I think? And I'm not opposed to this, but my question, you would also be, would this be prohibitive, prohibitive of people applying, knowing that they have $10,000 or $9,000 instead of $5?
See, and I don't think it would be because they don't have to, they don't have to pay it back unless they leave.
Right.
When we, when we, when I interview them before we offer the job and so forth, they all know about the contract and so forth. I have not given them a dollar amount. The person that's gonna start Monday, I have not given them a dollar amount. He knows there's a contract and so forth. He has not got a dollar amount because I got to check and see what the price of school. When you're doing interviews and starting to do that, you know, when we first started this, I think the school was $49.50.
Right.
Is what it costs. But now we're at $52.45. So, you know, as time, that was, I think the last time we did was in 2023, the last time we had a person that we did this. You know, if you got a Class A CDL, it puts you a little higher. You know, if there's two equal persons, I'm gonna hire the one that's already has the CDL before the other one.
Sure.
But just the way looking applications come in, and you want a good person.
And how many vacancies do you have right now?
Uh, just one. After this person's hired.
After this, there'll still be one?
Yes.
I think it makes sense. What was the number you suggested?
9,600.
9,600. And Ron, do you think there should be a line item, a line added to the document that says?
I think we put a blank in. He can fill in each one.
We can adjust it, you know, saying down the road, you know, in five years or something.
Salary we're paying is basically just for them to attend the schools. Because that's a full-time.
Correct.
Attendance at schools is a full-time person.
Paying them a full, full salary.
Which, as if they're working.
Minus $1 an hour.
Minus $1 an hour of what it would be if they were available to work. But they're not available to work.
Correct.
Yeah, there's times where, so they go to school, there's certain classwork, there's certain training, there's certain driving that they do. But then there's, sometimes there's some gaps in there because there's those so many trucks that they have. So if they're not reporting to school and driving in train, they report to our office, and we give them a work to do. Obviously, they can't drive CDL till they actually get their CDL, but we, we have work for them that they do.
By and large, though, your, the additional component is the direct cost of paying them to go to school.
Yes.
As well as tuition.
Right.
Which is fine, because they have a living, they have to make a living while they're getting their.
Sure.
So this is a little bit less than what we actually have invested per se. But I think it's easy figuring, and, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, you want to do it by the penny or anything like that. Just trying to come up with a figure. I thought what Henry County's doing, they're not going this high. But yet I think it was a good idea, and that's what kind of put in my head.
I like this, and I guess my question would be, Ron, can we get something added here today so that he can get it filled out on Monday?
Well, if, if, I don't know, Ron, if he wanted to add that spot in there, and then if you guys wanted to vote that it was okay to sign, then once he got that, we can fill it out, and then I can get you to sign it before Monday per se, maybe.
Is, is there, are there any requirements on any of our vehicles that require Class A over a Class B?
We have two trucks that require Class A. Most of our trucks are Class B. So I've been supervisor for 21 years. Since I've hired in as supervisor, I've made everybody get a Class A.
Okay.
If I had the right person, I'm not saying I wouldn't hire Class B. We do have some Class B drivers, but they've been there longer than the 21 years per se. So eventually, though, you want to, from my standpoint as management, you got to think, okay, who's got Class A? Who can move this equipment? Eventually, we'll get to that point where everybody has a Class A. Anybody can drive that, it's in mind. Is it something that they do all the time? No. But you don't have to think about it. If you're sending them to school, you might as well send them to school and get the Class A. Because if you don't, you can get the Class B, but then they can't drive the Class A, and you gotta go through the whole schooling process again to get the Class A. So.
I was just saying that because if we didn't have anything with Class A, it'd be smart just to go Class B.
Oh, yeah.
It'd probably reduce that leaving out the door.
Always had, I've been there 30 years, and we've always, we had a vehicle. We had a single axle with a trailer. It required a Class A. The previous person didn't follow the rules exactly the same. But I like to follow the rules per se.
Yep, and I appreciate that. For insurance purposes.
Yes.
I have no problem with this. I'm making mention that we approve this subject to Ron. Hitting a blank in there for the, the exact amount, and I'll prove up to $9,600.
And, and I'll second that. Are, are we gonna put an exact amount or just based on current pay and based on class cost?
I think for this.
This one, it would be an exact amount, but it could change. So I can come back to you if we have another one.
Well, there'll be a blank, but this particular one will actually be $9,600.
Yes, and I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion, Ron? Anything from you?
No, I think, I'm comfortable because it's a direct cost. I mean, it's contractual, so I mean.
And this really doesn't include your fringe benefits. But, but, but when a person's first hired in, there's a month waiting period or a month and a half, depending on when you hire in. So I thought not to.
Paying health and social security and all that.
Not to include that. This is still lower than what our actual cost is, but it's better than what we have.
It's a substantial amount of money, so.
Right, absolutely. All right, we have a motion and a second. Without any further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot for bringing this to us, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
We'll get this sorted out with Ron. I'll get it signed, and we'll, we'll get it to you by tomorrow. All right, thank you. Okay, Ron, what else have you got for us?
A couple of FYIs. When we got the capital improvement plan, we can do that if you can do that now.
Yeah, yeah. So I sent out a draft capital improvement plan, and it, it covers the minimum amount, the half of our, half of our receipts after we give half to Consolidated Edit. And infrastructure development is something that, that we pay for on a regular basis. So that's where I put the money. It gives us some flexibility. But it, it makes sure that we cover the, the process as it, as we're expecting all the other towns to, to do. So, Ron, any thoughts from you?
No, I mean, I, the numbers are there, they're there. I mean, it's, it's, like I said, it's much you do about nothing.
Exactly.
But you gotta do it.
Gotta do it. Anything from you guys?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve this capital improvement plan as presented to us now.
And I'll second that.
And authorize the president to sign, of course.
This is just a one-year agreement that we're doing.
Correct. No, this is two years. Although, I see, it, it asks for, for the term for which I am the chief executive, at least the way I read that.
But it says no more than, no less than two years.
But it says that I, I'm the chief executive of the above-designated taxing unit for the period of January 1st to 3rd. I mean, because we, we elect someone every year, so.
So do we have to redo this next year then? Or is your signing as of now?
It's a two-year, this is a two-year agreement.
At least it's a minimum of two years, yeah.
Right, but I, I am only, and I put in numbers for two years. But that middle line asks how long I'm the, or my term as the chief executive. So.
The manager should reflect that this is a two-year capital improvement plan for physical, for calendar years 25 and 26.
Great. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
File the suit to enforce the unsafe building order against the trailer.
Off of 27.
Off of 27.
Garden City.
Garden City, yeah. So we'll see how that goes. I did, we did not file to enforce the VCA's order. There were some issues with that that were just, you know, the relief we need under the unsafe building will be removal of the structure, and that's, that's really where we want to get to. So keep you posted there.
And does that carry through to cleanup of the, of the site or not? Just to remove the structure?
I'm assuming that this would then become part of blight elimination.
I mean, it, it is part of the.
I, I mean, I.
It's not. No, it's not.
It's not. It wasn't identified as part of that. This is just handled as a.
Well, I guess I've never seen any, anything that tells me what's in and out, not in the blight elimination.
Okay.
I think I gave you a revised template I sent to you. You may have not had time to dig it out since you got back.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't looked at anything.
The only thing, take a look at it as to payments. I had a little bit of a staggered schedule, and I think you talked about doing it the way we did it. For a while, just giving the money.
Right.
I, I don't really care. That's, that's the only thing I saw that might have been a little up in the air.
Okay. So just to fill you in and make sure you recall, part of the help program was blight elimination. We committed $390,000 from County Edit. The, the EDC committed $390,000 from Consolidated Edit. And, and so the understanding would convey that money to the EDC so that they can, they can implement the program and make payments. So that, we'll need to address that. We don't have a final copy. You sent me a draft, and we'll put it on the agenda, hopefully for next week, so that we can get money to the EDC, and they can, they can move forward.
And are we ready to proceed with the original template to the student engagement? I mean, I modified the funding source.
Yeah, I, I need to, I need to talk to those five schools.
It'd probably be nice to have some tangible to talk to them with. So I'll go ahead and do that. I think we did, we did a prototype based on Richmond, and we can.
But it, it's, it's being paid out of, out of Edit, so it doesn't have to have all of the boilerplate of the ARPA program. So is there anything we need to vote on? We don't need to approve anything yet, but hopefully by next week, it'll, it'll go on the agenda for blight elimination.
Well, so to answer your question, and then we'll have to plug into the process. And that, part of that will be finding money. If the owner doesn't do it.
We have to pay.
We're gonna have to do it, add it to the tax rolls.
Well, and so we, we may be able to pay for removal if it comes to that, out of that blight elimination, because it's not.
Yeah, I don't, was there a cutoff or just when the money ran out?
It's our program. We can make the cutoff whenever we want it to be. Because all the money's not committed.
As I say, I think the cutoff is when the money is committed.
Exactly. Because, remember that, that this money for blight elimination is part of the match for a ready.
Ready, yeah.
Grant application. So, so that means we'll need to spend it eventually.
There may be a short-term cash flow issue. I mean, I don't know. We got what, $5,000 in that non-recurring fund? And I don't know what it's gonna cost to take that trailer off there.
I don't either, but I think, I think it makes the most sense to move it over to the program that the EDC is, is operating.
I agree. I think we have the funds there.
Yeah, there's still room there, I think.
And there is, there is. So we'll, we'll make sure we get that done. But in the meantime, we've got to go through the, the process to see whether the owner is gonna do anything, right?
I, I am in the process of preparing suits to file on behalf of the COVID small business loan program against one delinquent borrower. And then a regular action against an existing account through the revolving loan fund that's been delinquent for quite a while. So I'm gonna be working with Celine to get those numbers and get those filed this.
So speaking of the revolving loan fund, I need to know, I think the board needs to know what ability we have to modify the program. If we have any.
Yeah, I don't.
We've got like $400,000 in this, in this loan program or revolving loan fund. And the only, the only loan we have granted was this, this fall. We, we did the first one since, I don't know, in the last five years or so. We've made some modifications to a couple of them because the owner has changed.
We basically just allowed to use some of the money in the revolving loan fund as seed money for the small business COVID loan.
Right, but that's, most of that is gonna come back to us. Those loans are.
And I think we did that without having a handle on what the original parameters were because I think it's been so long, I don't even know that. And I, and I'm not aware that we've ever been audited on the program, but I don't, I don't know that for a fact either.
And my, my time on the, on the board has been limited. Luckily, I use that term guardedly. Luckily, the commissioner who's on the board gets to serve as the president. And so I've become more involved. But I think we need to figure out a way to try to make that money useful. One of the things that, that I'm considering is particularly if the ready funds are granted, we've applied for funding for downtown redevelopment across the county, which the money we've already put towards that through the help program is allowed to be used as the match. And, and we put up an extra million dollars between the county and County Edit and Consolidated Edit. But I think using the revolving loan fund specifically for any, I'll call it attraction of businesses to the downtowns across the county would be of benefit not only to, to us, but to the towns that, that would be involved. And I'll tell you, one of those is Hagerstown. We don't know yet whether they're gonna be participants in the Consolidated Edit program. I haven't heard anything. Apparently, they, they met on Monday night. But I don't know whether they took any action.
They didn't discuss anything about it.
Okay.
And I think they have the feeling that because we rejected the two-year, that they're out this year and they, they can't come back. But I, I want to make sure to reach out and communicate.
I made it clear to the people I talked to that, that they're welcome to, to join at any time. And so at any rate, they have a, their own revolving loan program set up out of the Edit that they have kept over the years. And to me, there's, there's no reason to duplicate a program if it already exists and it's already funded. So.
So my question is, the original $400,000 that's in it, did that, was that initiated or come from COVID money back when we got? Or where did that money come from initially then?
You'd have to ask the commissioners from 30.
So it's been there a while, a long time then? This is not something that was.
Then he had some research.
Information of anybody that I, that I've worked with, you know? And I don't know how much of that he.
I know there originally was a request to council before I joined council. So that's 26 years ago. To, to fund the revolving loan program. And, and what I've been able to uncover is the council voted no. So where the money came from, I.
I thought it was an EDA grant, but I.
It could have been an EDA grant. Typically, those convert back to the, to the community after so many years. And, you know, this has been.
And we just had.
Far more than, than 26.
Oh, yeah. I've been around since 2000, so it's almost 25 years.
And so historically, this has not been used a lot then?
It's not. There are, I mean, we had, what, five outstanding loans?
Probably at one time, we might have had six or seven, but.
No, these are just through the revolving loan fund that were issued prior to COVID.
Okay.
And, and the guidelines have been there as far as job creation, cost per job created or retained.
Right.
And we've always said that it's kind of like a lender of last resort. So we usually require some evidence. They've tried to get conventional lending.
And it was turned down.
Or we will provide supplement, supplemental financing over above.
If a bank is willing to do $50,000, we could do.
And we just had the application looked at by Ian and Kyle Clark. So we might want to take a look at, I, I haven't seen that. If I have it, I.
It's, and so.
Look at it and see if we need to modify.
It's been updated, but we haven't updated the, the policy and the requirements that they, that a, a group would need to meet. So for example, if, at least the way I read it, if there was a downtown business that wanted to improve their facade, let's say, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't mean an increase in employment, then it probably doesn't fit the, the guidelines that we currently have.
We had a range of expected, you know, loan, loan to employment, added and or retained, but it wasn't zero. It didn't start at zero.
Exactly, exactly. So it wasn't, it probably doesn't fit. And so can we modify those, those guidelines so that for specific issues?
You know, we're not necessarily.
Specific places.
Be in any wheel, but they're two different wheels. I think we can take a look at seeing what the city's guidelines are. Because they've, I think theirs might have even predated ours by a few years. I'm not sure.
I expect. So.
What are they based interest rate on? Where do we?
We're half New York prime with a minimum of three.
Okay.
So even when the, you know, it was still attractive.
Right. So, okay, anyway, we'll continue to look at that.
Yeah, it kind of keep me in the loop and that, kind of in my bailiwick there.
You know, there's a, there's a commissioner's spot.
Not that I want to be. Not that I want to be.
There's a commissioner's spot on the board that, you know, might be right up in the alley.
I can make contact with the city to ask them their.
I'll, I'll talk to them.
AJ or Kim, somebody.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start with Beth and, and work my way through that, that group. I know a couple of people that are on their board too, so, uh, we'll have those conversations. Okay. What, what else have you got, Ron?
We have been served with a subpoena for the production of documents, which is quite burdensome and onerous from the attorneys for, it looks like the insurance companies related to the Midway fire. So I'm probably going to have to have Steve's help on this and IT's help. They want to, they want to know, you know, all communications we had regarding the building since 1931.
1931?
Yeah.
I've been around here a long time, but that even. That's about the time you started, wasn't it?
All documents and communication related to your knowledge of hazardous substances and/or materials at the plastic recycling site from 1931 to the present. That's the first one. So it's, it's pretty stupid, but we, we'll, we'll do the best we can. Do word searching and whatever. I know part of what we're going to have, we'll go back to the period of time that was under the Hoffco common ownership, you know? And I think Steve was, we were involved in that and did, did some inspections on the inside and the roof was near collapse, wasn't it, one time? But.
So essentially.
And that was in the context of not, we were not going to take a certificate of purchase if it failed to sell at the tax sale and made a finding that to that effect, I think there was a resolution we passed, probably one of the few ones we've ever done for a specific property. I think we did that one and maybe we did the old Warfield Oil.
Right.
Site on F Street.
Okay.
So we'll just have to work on it and, uh, give them the best shot we got. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what they're trying to do, but.
But, but because it was, it's within the city limits, our, our, uh, communication with them was, was fairly limited.
Very limited, I would have thought. I mean, I know mine personally, and like I say, the only thing I can even identify as being directly related was that the issues that we had when it was going up for tax sale and we're not going to take a certificate of purchase because we know it wouldn't sell.
Right, right. And so.
On that, I lived down there in the corner for, in the 50s, so I can remember a little bit. Played baseball in the parking lot.
Did you, uh, send any emails or, you know, have any?
I don't know. If I did, I don't, I, I definitely.
Sending postcards to your friends about that building?
Uh, probably broke a few windows, if the truth be known, with the baseball.
Oh, wow. And that's what started.
You started it all right there.
And it ended up collapsing, so I guess.
It was the start of the downfall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I, I think we all are following AIM and they're doing a good job of keeping this up.
Well, we, we follow AIC more than AIM.
Okay.
But yeah, we're getting a lot of updates on, on those. Are you on a committee with AIM on the?
Well, I'm past president two years ago and then I kept my membership up, so, you know, yeah, I, I'm not on any really active committee. I mean, Jody retired and, and, you know, we, we gal, Pika, they do a good job. I mean, you know, they're.
Good, good.
That's all.
Okay. We'll, uh, try to keep on track for a couple of those things to come to us next week. Per Barry Ritter's conversation, hopefully we'll have that final contract.
Yeah, I mean, I think he cleaned it up. It just, he sent us the red line and so I didn't see anything. Everywhere there was a choice between 2% versus 3%, because the word said two and the number said three for the annual increase in Tower End, it was, they made sure they went with a bigger number of the two.
Three? Okay. All right. Any questions for Ron? If not, Mr. Higginbotham.
Okay. You have any questions from the presentation I made to council this morning on the projects?
I do not.
I have none.
I have several, but.
Oh, here we go.
I'll get with you later.
I did have on my notes though, this, when we were talking about the proxy cards and we said that we were going to start using, have a policy for that being our IDs. I think we should probably start working on that policy so that we don't get the proxy card, then we start working on the policy just to, so it's not.
Good point.
17 years before we have that.
Good point. You interested in taking the lead on, working with Steve on that?
Yeah.
And, and Kim probably is, uh, from HR.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Good, good. I, I would say that I was out at, at Coleman on Monday night for the soil and water, um, annual dinner and the ceiling looks beautiful. I mean, it, it really.
That's big come.
I mean, it's, it's nice. I mean, it's nothing fancy, but.
But it's bright.
Really cleaned it up and the lighting system is much better. So I, that was a, that was a worthwhile investment.
Tard and feathered, do you think?
No, no, I, it was only the, the 30 or 40 of us that were out. It was pretty sparsely attended for whatever reason, unfortunately, but, uh, it was a, it was a nice meeting. The, the sound system, um, is that something that is on the radar of the, the fairgrounds committee?
No.
The sound system.
It needs them, it needs updated.
It's not.
Yeah.
A priority at this point. It's, it's not on the list, I don't think, and, and.
Why, was there a problem?
It's, it's not very good. It's adequate for the number of people.
Of course, see generally when there's a rental out there, they, they, sound system. So ours is not used all the time.
Right. But it, it was that night. And then, um, the same question on, uh, on the, uh, First Bank Expo Hall. Are, are we, um, is there a sound system? Do we have a sound system over there or is that something that people bring in?
It's actually decent over there. People bring them in.
People bring them in?
Like if.
There is one there.
There is one there. We've used that before. When the auctioneers come in, you know, they, they bring their own system in. And when the chamber was there, they rented, Heartbreaker, I think was who it is. Remember, those are on our list of potential vendors for renters on our website.
Right, okay. Okay. What else?
I have a request from EMA. For the last several years, they have combined their, uh, training with Preble and Dart County to do, uh, weather training. And it comes up in March of this year. So it's this year, it's our turn to host this and Matthew is requesting, uh, to be able to use the Coleman Center. This is on behalf of the National Weather Service, so the National Weather Service is actually putting on the, the event and we would be the host of it. Last couple of years it has been hosted at Preble and Dart County. Matthew expects about 100 participants to this and it would be on March 17th, the evening of March 17th from about 5 to 9:00. And he is requesting to waive the rental fees for this.
And you've checked and it's available that day?
Yes.
Questions, concerns, comments? I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
So can I have a motion to allow the, the, uh, use of the building?
I'll make a motion.
No second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. All right.
The other thing is also from EMA and in, uh, five years ago, they received some used equipment from Hancock County. These were radio equipment and monitors that were compatible with our equipment at the time. And so they took the used ones from Hancock County and sabotaged some of the parts off of it to, to fix our parts. So now these, uh, this equipment is no longer usable to us. Some of it doesn't even work. I checked with Craig in IT. He also confirms that these are obsolete. They, the parts are no longer available for these pieces of equipment. These are typically what we would sell at auction and get a buck apiece for some of the monitors and equipment. So I have a, a list of three radio consolates. These are Apex consolates, two computers, Motorola computers and radio controllers and three Motorola monitors and one Vusonic monitor. And I have company serial numbers that I can give Bobby to calculate these. But I'm suggesting that we declare these no value so we can dispose them.
Have you reached out to our, uh, online auction house and asked if, if they had any interest in putting that up for sale?
Probably wouldn't put these because, you know, certainly by the time we, you know, some of this stuff we're going to just dispose of because it just doesn't make sense for us to store it, keep it, move it. If we typically only get a buck or two out of it and by the time they've charged us an online fee, doesn't make much sense. But there's other items that they will be willing to take and do online auction for. For example, uh, we have a.
Is the fee, I thought the fee was based on the sale price.
It is 5% of the sale price.
Okay. So.
So if it goes for a dollar, they're going to charge us 5 cents, but.
So my question being then, one of the, one of the issues when we started down this road of doing online auctions was that we didn't know, number one, what all they would accept. We knew they wanted the cars because those always go at a substantial amount. But I don't think we also know whether it's being online and going to a broader audience who might have an interest that might, um, generate higher dollars than the physical auction where there's only.
Yeah, the only drawback with that, if we don't take some action at least to try to leave some of this stuff out that we know is not of much value, the auctioneer doesn't want to store this smaller stuff at his place. So we would still store it and this would be where people would view it if they wanted to.
View it if they wanted to, okay, so. He took the cars.
Yep.
And, and had them in his control.
They actually go to his site there and, and we don't do anything after that.
Okay.
And I, and I think to, to your point, it's, at some point we need to say, based upon our experience, this stuff is just of no value and it's not worth even moving to the basement of the courthouse.
And I agree with, on metal that we're going to scrap and that kind of stuff, that makes sense. I'm just thinking that we haven't tried this in an online kind of situation. Just throwing it out there, I don't know.
I, I think maybe it's worth a shot to see and get some more money. Well, this, I don't disagree with you, but on this particular pile of stuff, based upon what both Matthew and John Duke has said and what Craig IT has said.
No value.
This is pretty worth it.
Just get, okay, so what, how would we dispose of this?
So some of this that has monitors in them is a problem because you've got to pay to dispose of them. So you end up giving it away. We've had a couple of people that, when we've had our, our auctions, that the stuff didn't sell or it sold, but the person wanted something else in the.
Didn't take it.
Lot, they left them. And so we had a person come and just pick it up rather than throwing it in the dumpster because then we would have to pay for that disposal. So in answer to your question, my guess is most of this would be thrown away, um, that doesn't have the monitor portion with it. Some of these are just controllers. Not, they don't have the screens with them. There's, uh, four screens.
Four monitors. So you're saying those we're going to have to pay to somebody to?
Let somebody take some.
And how would they take them?
Just give them away. Call our people, these two people that normally, like our copiers that don't sell, they'll, they'll haul the way for us.
Okay.
Not telling you it was a good idea, but anytime you've got these monitors, you know, because we rotate out these monitors all the time.
All the time, sure.
And we have, in the past, remember we've stored all these things because it's.
Dozens of them.
Yeah, I mean, skids of them. And, uh, we tried one year, well, several years. Remember we got like two bucks for a skid of them and then they left.
And then they didn't take them.
One or two that they wanted and, and then we left.
So, so what's your suggestion?
Take them along the highway, let Mike pick them up.
That was a joke, right?
That was a joke.
That was, that was a good one.
Put them on a street corner and see if somebody drives by and picks them up.
When you don't make jokes very often, you need to prep.
Here comes a joke.
Well, I knew that was a joke because he drinks just water.
That's a good point.
I knew he wouldn't do that.
Not today.
Not today.
It's Glacier Mist.
Okay.
So again, I, I guess I'm not connecting after two weeks, two days at the, it just seemed like.
Two weeks?
At the AIC conference, but I'm not speaking Steve.
He was at the swamp and now he's.
So what are you asking us to do today?
Declare these of no value.
And then what, when we do that, what are you going to do with it? Most of it you're going to throw away?
Correct. And I will leave this up to IT because he's the one that disposes of the monitors.
Okay, so he'll, he'll dispose of the monitors. Okay.
I know there's a company that takes electronics and it's probably what he will do, call them and, yep.
I'll make a motion that we declare these have no value and dispose of them, however they're going to get rid of them. And for the record, I'll give the serial numbers and description to Bobby so she can put it on the record.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Now we beat that horse to death.
I agree.
Now, going forward with this, I think, you know, I think this is going to be a regular process and I, I think I want a little more formal process.
I agree. That's what I'm trying to get to. And I think, I think in some cases, we need to test the waters.
Yep.
To see whether there's some way to, to recoup any, any value. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I would agree.
What's next?
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
You mean, he's been gone for two days and that's all you have?
It's been wonderful. Bobby even said how wonderful it's been.
I know that's a joke.
Is that a joke?
Oh, I didn't think it was.
See, he needs some prep and he's, and he's going to make it funny. Okay, so we've got the capital improvement plan, the CDL reimbursement, um, the contract litigation line item. Bobby, help me with that.
That's the one where we, um, it's the new line item for this year. As council gave us $5,000 for it and we're just about to bust it in the first month.
Okay. Contract litigation, what, what have we paid? What is the contract part of that?
Um, well, some of the extra work that Ron Cross does for us. Or any tort claims that the insurance lawyers, um, charge us for.
Okay, so.
I don't think I've had anything extra in 25 yet, have I?
The ARPA.
I think, yeah, that it, I don't think it was work you did in 25. It was, it was the bill pay.
Some, like a thousand bucks in odds and arpa stuff, but I thought that was paid by ARPA.
We did not, um, budget anything for 25. So it would have been in 24.
To the extent that it. Um, you know, if it's been paid, I guess. I would have said, don't pay it if I'd known it.
But you would also have, you had some in that BZA filing that got appealed too.
Well, there is ongoing litigation for that. I mean, you know, we have that, uh, as well as the possible ongoing litigation with this, would have been an action suit against the clerk. Those are two pieces of litigation that are still potentially active.
Right. And those are, those are up to beyond your contract.
Yeah.
So, so we put in a line item of $5,000. The, really the only option to that in, in what we currently have available is we got an increase in our contractual line item. Went up to $100,000, um, from.
70.
70,000 from 65. Okay. So I asked for 100,000. I guess we only got 70,000. So there's, there's wiggle room there.
Why don't we go back to council and ask them to appropriate more for that? I mean, if it's truly.
For legal.
Legal. Why should we take it from?
Well, we used to take the bills we would get from our carriers and had that applied against the insurance line item kind of because it basically is our deductible for our liability. But if that's being carried under legal contractual, that's a change in accounting that I don't have a problem with. It's, it's historically not quite the way we handle it in the past.
Well, and I think all of the, all of the insurance line items are limited to the premiums, aren't they? There's, we don't have a deductible line item.
Just the one that Mike has for the vehicles.
Right. So, so it may be that we need to put something together and go to, to counsel and request additional.
Particularly because, I mean, we're, you know, we're looking at by far the biggest source of potential claims is the jail.
Right.
And healthcare issues sometimes related to, to inmate healthcare. So each of which has a $25,000. So, and predicting that is, is not.
It's impossible. But if we have a line item that we, we only spend money for litigation that's, that's not covered under your existing contract, then it's something that we've got to pay and we got to figure out.
Yeah, just a matter of where you feel more comfortable having, and like I say, it's not going to be something you're able to plan for.
It's, it's February and we already went through it, so.
Exactly. So let's, let's put something together now. Do we have outstanding bills?
Not at this time.
Okay, we paid the one out of, out of contractual.
Or maybe we should wait until we get a bill to, because you know how counsel's going to be.
We need to put together an estimate and be ready to go.
I should be getting the next one from insurance any day.
So we will have some then, so.
We've got a couple of claims that are to be defended.
Take it to, to, I believe, let's defer it to the March meeting because we've got a lot of stuff going on with the planning process at the workshop. So they want to try to keep that meeting short. We can, we can tell them that we have this issue and we'll be coming to them at the March meeting with a, with a recommendation. Okay.
Yeah, if you want to just talk to Max and kind of give him a heads up, that's fine with me if it's okay with Aaron.
Yes.
All right. Bobby, anything else?
No.
Aaron, you got anything?
Just claims and minutes. I just wanted to clarify an email that Steve sent and if we need to take any further action about the coroner's vehicles and insurance.
Okay, I don't think I've seen that one, so.
Yeah, he's. Remember the, during the course of our conversation with the fleet safety policy that we're developing about the use of county vehicles by elected officials and where they would not be, maybe they wouldn't be, you know, part of the driver's license check, et cetera, et cetera. And so we reached out and, because the question came up about the coroner, if you specifically, and they've indicated that the coroner would be covered under the professional healthcare and social services liability coverage, you know, general liability cover, liability policy, that would only cover them in their work and their capacity as the coroner, not any, I don't know if they drive this car off duty, I don't know.
Well, or if they were partnering with Union County.
Correct, that's right. You know, there's, there was discussion that they would do, they would help Union County. Apparently this would not cover it.
Okay.
Now, I guess you could stretch it to say that it's the work is the Wayne County coroner helping them, but I think, I think we need some parameters to.
Okay.
At least some understanding of how these vehicles were used.
Yeah, and I think we need to verify if they are actually driving it.
Are they marked vehicles?
They will be.
They will be.
Okay, I was going to say that needs to happen for two reasons, the tax implications if they're marked or.
Correct, yeah.
And, and I agree, I mean, with, with some of the new personnel, I mean, coroner's office probably has the biggest newer personnel overall, but along with the other offices that may use vehicles, it might not be a bad idea to send out and remind our elected officials and our.
Remember the way the discussion was, the way our policy is, employees who, whose job description requires them to, to have a driver's license and whether they're going to operate our vehicles or our own, they will be a part of this list of approved driver's license. Elected officials, if they choose not to, then they can't drive our cars. It's just that simple.
Right. Right.
But the coroner has a car assigned to him, so he's a little different.
He has to meet it or he doesn't.
So, but it's assigned to the office, it's not specifically assigned to him.
See, I don't know how they, I don't know if they, I don't know.
I'm just saying with all the newer employees and elected officials, we ought to remind them what our policy is.
They come in and pick that vehicle up.
So I guess I'm not, I'm not clear on what it is you're suggesting. We need to clarify with everybody, not just the coroner.
Oh, I think.
Yes, yes.
The coroner's a little different than the other elected officials where he has a specific car assigned to him or to his office where the auditor does not.
Right.
And so if the auditor chooses not to.
The surveyor does.
The surveyor does.
Other offices to the assessor.
So does the surveyor, is, based on our new policy, does he have the ability to drive that vehicle?
If he doesn't.
When he's not working as a surveyor?
See, I think that.
They're not supposed to.
I think that the commissioners have the authority to say whether it's a take home car or not.
Absolutely, so.
Well, that's why we're trying to clarify is.
Have, who have we said has a take home car other than in the sheriff's office?
Matthew King.
Okay.
And the highway supervisors.
Right. And so.
Well, we've never even, we've never talked about the surveyor or the coroner.
The last time we really got in depth in that was when we were looking at the health department under, under Eric's administration and.
And that's been a while.
Well, I think with the insurance, how they're really micromanaging our fleet, that we have to micromanage our, our personnel and our elected officials on this because.
Absolutely.
Now, because if our insurance company is telling us that due to coverage, this is what we will cover as your insurance company, I mean, we can't bury from that because, I mean, we could lose insurance or rates up or anything else.
When we apply our, our fleet policy, let's say, the surveyor, whoever it might be. Now, in Rock City, Rock, Clark, his job description requires him to have a driver's license. So he'll have to be on the list. He can't say no. But Gordon's an elected official, he can say, I don't want to be on this.
And so, and therefore.
And then he can't drive a vehicle.
Okay. So, so go back to the coroner's office because that's where they started.
The same way, the coroner, you know, unlike Matthew, Matthew's not an elected official to take the auditor. The auditor doesn't have a car assigned to him. If he wants to drive our cars, our pool cars, then he needs to be on the list. If he doesn't, he can't drive them.
Needs to be on the list that has been verified.
Driver's record.
Driver's record.
Needs our policy.
The coroner where that office has a car assigned to it and he's an elected official, the question came up, if he doesn't, you know, if he doesn't have his driver's license vetted through us, are we hanging out for liability?
Well, I think it has to be. They have to submit to this.
Yes.
The seven.
Yeah.
The seven deputy coroners and the coroner.
Well, I think it's twofold though. You're talking about licensed policy, get, you know, he's, gets his driver's license verified, then also based on this email, driving the vehicle, why not as the capacity of doing work?
We've never addressed that, I mean.
With the coroner.
Right.
We don't allow it with the surveyor. Who, who, I mean, I don't know who all has.
Matthew has a take home truck as well as John Duke.
Right.
But again, they're not to drive them except for an official business.
Correct. Is that, I mean, do we have a policy in place?
Other than de minimis.
Minutest. Correct, but I think.
But we've never addressed the coroner or surveyor for that matter. At this point, the surveyor is not an issue.
Okay, so how did we address Matthew and, and John?
You, you indicated officially that those could be taken home.
So is there a document? Because none of this.
Well, see, they're supposed, and I don't, I haven't followed that. Mike brings to you.
Every year he does that to us.
Yeah, his fringe benefit document. And in our policy, in our personnel policy, the other departments are supposed to do that too.
Okay, so, so it's, it's handled under personnel policy? So I think we need to get the director of personnel to, to make sure that.
There's, you know, in my mind, there's.
Informing people.
Checklist.
Absolutely.
And each year, because you have fringe benefits, for example, non-merit officers who have this car, like jail commander, has a take home car and it's, and that is a fringe benefit.
Correct.
And remember.
And do they not do that, do they not fill out the forms?
I don't believe it's done before you. I don't know.
I've never seen it come before us either, okay. But it is a, in my opinion, it's, it's a human resources process.
And I don't know, man, I don't want to go far afield on fringe benefits, but remember there was a question, there's no question that the, the uniform that the merit officers wear is not a fringe because it's, can't be worn to a movie theater or something like that. But if you're buying suits for a detective, that could be worn to a wedding or something like that. So there should be a fringe benefit cost to that.
Okay.
And that's in our policies.
Okay.
So we just need to revisit our policies and make sure that they're being enforced.
Correct.
There's forms to do that.
All right. Take care of them.
I, I vote that Aaron works with Steve on this one.
Oh my gosh.
And Kim, I think Kim needs to be involved as the HR director.
Well, the cars are marked cars.
Well, they're not marked now. They will be, but.
Well, I mean, the surveyor's car is.
The surveyor is.
Marked ones or the ones that have, they define it as special equipment. For example, in Mike's truck, he carries gas, diesel fuel, signs, tools.
Right.
So his, his vehicle is equipped with special equipment and it's marked, so it, it escapes that fringe benefit criteria.
So what he submits is usually his uniforms in it.
I don't know what he submits.
Yes, yes. It's for, it's for uniform.
If that's it.
I thought, because I questioned it.
I, I thought it was for his vehicle, the one we looked at this year.
He does it. I thought he brings that plus his supervisors forms in once a year.
And I think, I, I thought it was for his vehicle.
Which if it's marked, maybe you're saying necessarily he doesn't have to do that if it's.
If it's marked, it doesn't.
Well, and if it's marked and he's not using it for personal use, it's not a fringe benefit, correct?
Yeah, other than.
De minimis.
Yes. And his uniforms, it would be a fringe benefit because I'm sure he.
Um, you know what?
I'm sure he doesn't wear those to weddings.
Right, and they've got, and they've got Wayne County.
Right.
They're marked.
Right.
Okay, well, clearly we're not going to solve this today, but.
Correct.
But to Brad's question.
Needs to be on the list.
Yes.
To Brad's question about the, the liability coverage, I do think that warrants a, a guidance from you.
Absolutely.
To the coroner and other departments.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else, Brad?
Nope, that was it.
Ron, have you got anything else?
Somebody stuck, looks like a tentative tax deed sale calendar for '25.
He's got a deed sale calendar, does that come from you?
It said 2024 deed sale calendar. But yeah, the date, the date of the sale is April 17th, 2025, so.
We need to.
News to me.
We need to get on that because that's, we need to do.
Is that deed sale?
Yes.
Deed sale.
Yes. Let's, let's bring that back for discussion next week, so we need to be on top of that.
And they do have this in front of me, what is this?
I just, I just brought you that. That is the HFI, the Health First Indiana Committee roster that, that Dan has been working on.
Okay, and I emailed you the two names if you didn't already have them, a 10 cent.
Okay, okay, good. So, well, we need to get to work on this as well. Claims and minutes?
Yes. I have minutes for commissioners meeting January 29, 2025 to be approved. I'd like to make a motion to approve those, please.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And I have claims, I have all the claims, I'll go through them here real quick. Jury pay dated 2/4 of '25. Jury pay 2/4 of '25. Jury pay February 6, 2025.
We have three claims for jury pay?
Yes, and they're all from Spirit 3. I wonder if it's not the same. Let's see, the first one is for, it was the court services. And then the other ones are just jury pay. And they, they are different names, so.
So they're different, different juries?
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
And then I have Northern AV Group dated 2/5 of 2025. I have monthly contracts paid 2/6 of '25. I have general claims dated 2/6 of '25. I have state taxes and payroll dated 2/5 of '25. Payroll dated 2/5 of '25. Dunflex and garnishments dated 2/5 of '25. Boston Mutual payroll deductions dated 2/5 of '25. Federal payroll taxes dated 2/5 of '25. I'd like to make a motion to approve those, please.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve claims. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Anything else, Aaron?
No, sir.
Last chance, anybody? Auditor's office? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, did you have a hotel rate that we need to approve?
I do.
Sorry.
I just remembered, sorry.
Then we can wait till next week if you don't have it. Just put that on next week, someone. I just remembered that, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.